Okay. Town of Log Lane Village Agenda Regular Meeting Board of Trustees April sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. The time is six thirty-five P. M. Two oh two Birch Street, Log Lane Village, Colorado. Eight oh seven oh five. At any meeting, the potential. Six, six thirty-five. At any meeting, the potential exists that an executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, section four, to discuss such things as litigation, personal matters, property transactions, conferences with attorneys, security matters, or any protected information may be called. Regular meeting. Comments from the public are welcome at the beginning of each meeting. Comments that are no longer than five minutes will be heard. Follow me the presentation of the staff or the petitioner. Please wait until the mayor recognizes you and state your name and address for the record. Public comment and citizens' concerns. The Board of Trustees will make no decision nor will they take action except to direct their appropriate town employee. At this time, um, do we have any citizens' concerns in the audience tonight? Yes, so if you could stand and say your name, you can, you can come up here. Yep. Yep, and your address for the record. Okay, and what brings you here tonight? Okay. So you guys didn't submit a written complaint? I didn't have a written. Okay, so you don't want to pursue anything, don't have a complaint? Okay. All right, thank you for your time. Gentlemen in the back.
My name is Dale Webster, I own a property one oh two, Poplar.
Okay.
And I do have a written complaint, and I had an issue with the alleyway on the east side of Poplar Field Block. And I can't get through with pickup. And it's happened several occasions. Today, I come over, got my trailer, made my turn, because I can't go to the left, I had to back all the way out the alley into the street. Because I picked up a block, come back two hours later, it's later.
Okay.
That needs to be stopped unless the city's going to allow people to do that.
No, sir, we will not, so I will get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Uh huh, you're welcome.
Pardon me? You just wanted to test your backing abilities.
Thank you. Are there any other, um, concerns or complaints? No, okay. We will proceed forward with roll call.
Naomi?
Here.
Josie? Here. Ellie?
Here.
Cajun?
Here.
Melissa?
Here.
Robin?
Here.
Angie?
Here.
Okay, if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Onto the consent agenda. Line items one through four. Line item one, approval of March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular meeting minutes. Line item two, approval of March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, special meeting minutes. Line item three, approval of payments from March first through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Line item four, approval of payments made from April first through the fifteenth.
You have a couple of questions. Um, on the, um, payments for three one twenty-five and three thirty-one through three thirty-one twenty-five. The one dash, or I guess it's, uh, thirty-six oh two? Law Office of Colleen. Your Billy?
Yes.
For eight hundred and forty dollars, what was that for? Ian, the Goberge's, um, attorney. So we're paying him, yes, if they are financially destitute, then we have to pay for their attorney. And then, um, I had a question on thirty-five ninety-eight, page two. Custom signals, what was that for? For twenty-five, uh, two thousand five hundred and thirty dollars?
You're a lot of two thousand.
And then, for First Citizens Bank, this is document fee for two hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-eight cents.
What page is that?
Um, that is on page three, or it's actually the second page, but, no, I guess it is page three. Um, thirty-six oh three?
The P laser, is that the, is that what you're talking about, the?
No, it says thirty-six oh three, First Citizens Bank. It's almost, uh, about three quarters of the way down on page three.
Yes, I see that.
We'll have to get back to down that Angie. Okay? That was all the questions I had.
One, two, three, I'm looking the wrong way. Any other questions? Oh, First Citizens, congratulations. Oh, is that, well, it's for the postage, is it not? It was, falls on, it falls underneath.
So the postage would be, um, oh. It is for Citizens Bank, isn't it? You're right, it is postage.
For that, for the new, for the new machine. Postage, yeah.
I know that, but are we paying the bank?
No, it's.
So that's where we send the money for the, um, for the postage for that machine, they, they want it sent to. Now that's where we have to pay. In automatic payment, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we should, you guys should.
Not just.
That's a weird way to put it in there, yeah.
That's the description that they sent on the invoice, and that's why I put that.
Okay.
I could change it to.
Payment, payment. Okay. Anything else, anybody?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, that was Cajun, yes.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yeah.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, onto the reports for the mayor's report. Um, as you all know, Easter's this weekend, so we will be having, hopefully, weather permitting, we can continue with our Easter egg hunt. Um, we'll have to see how it looks on Friday, and, um, I will be in contact with the ladies to see if we will have to, hopefully, we won't have to cancel, but if we do, it'll be first thing in the morning. Uh, and the age groups that will be participating will be ages zero through three, four through six, seven through nine, ten through thirteen, and then the last group is fourteen and up, which isn't usually very many. The next event that will be coming up will be our trash cleanup, and that will be the beginning of May, Friday, May second, from twelve to four, Saturday, May third, from eight to five, and Sunday, May fourth, from eight to two. And then we will again have another, um, cleans, or a fall cleanup in September as well, just to have two a year, I think will be a good help to everybody. And that is all that I have, um, for my mayor's report. Josie, if you can give the Conservation Trust report.
Conservation Trust report, April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, beginning balance, I love, three one twenty twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, with eight cents. They have one spent at a two oh three. I forget it, um, zero, sorry, beginning balance, they have twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-six.
Okay, did they give the parks? What, did you pay for the parks?
We paid for the parks, um, can't remember.
For the treatment of the park?
The lawn?
Yes, um, I don't, did, did we get a payment that we just pulled to, um, Lost Creek?
There is, there's a payment, but she's, her question was, did it come out of Conservation Trust?
It will, I don't know if it did.
Did, okay.
I will make sure it did.
Okay. And I have, um, Sophie for the treasurer's report. You might have to move your, does the mic even work? Because I, we mentioned that last time, and I don't know if he's come out to.
Um, here's my diagram.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, general fund, uh, beginning balance for March first, twenty twenty-five, that's three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars with forty-four cents. A credit's at eighty-nine, uh, a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, a hundred and forty dollars, seven cents. Debits at a hundred and thirteen, at two hundred and eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and five, with fifty-three cents. Ending balance for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and ninety-one, with ninety-eight cents. A vehicle call rock savings for March, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-one, with thirty-two cents. Uh, New Water Enterprise account, um, oh, oh, March, for March thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-five, three thousand, three hundred. The Colorado Trust balance, um, ending in eight zero zero one, for March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, fifty thousand, nine hundred and thirty, with eighty-five cents. Express deposit account, as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, thirty thousand, sixty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents.
Okay, thank you. Next, public safety, Pedro.
Welcome, uh, from that month of eighty-eight, office services, um, thirteen truck, like, people. Couple arrests, if you, if you're working.
Okay. Thank you. Public Works, Mike?
I have no problem with this one.
Okay. And then we have tonight, Dan Finley, Dan?
Yeah, nothing, nothing, uh, specific to report, I did just want to follow up, uh, you know, we, we had that meeting, and we definitely have a plan that we're ready to launch in terms of abatement of some of those properties. Uh, there's been some email traffic, just, just waiting for the final documentation and citations, but, uh, we're ready when you guys are. Um, just let us know.
Thank you. Onto new business. Line item one, motion to approve, disapprove table, sustainable environmental solutions contract. Oh, yes. I, okay. Yes.
I'll make a motion to table, uh, sustainable environmental solutions contract.
I'll second.
Roll call. Yes.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, line item two, motion to approve, disapprove table, purchase of the two thousand and eighteen Navistar forty-three hundred truck with Timco six hundred, okay. The regenerative air sweeper, um, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We will have a three-year, uh, note paying thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the two thousand and eighteen Navistar forty-three hundred truck with Timco six hundred B A H regenerative air sweeper attached for two hundred and seventy-five thousand. We will have a three-year note paying three, thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents per year.
Second. Wait, I have a quick question, sorry. So, we'll make an initial payment of how much?
Thirty-six thousand.
So. That doesn't make sense. Thirty-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen, um, I'm, three is not equal to two hundred and seventy-five dollars. It should be, should be ninety-six thousand.
That's for the down payment.
That's what I was asking, so. What is the down payment? Because this, the way it's broke down on the contract.
Contract, it doesn't show that way.
Advance payment of ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, ninety-nine cents, and then three additional payments of ninety-six thousand.
So I think it's the ni, is it, then it's the ninety-six is the initial, and then the thirty-six, maybe?
Not, it's not thirty-six, it's ninety-six. It's a misprint.
It's probably.
Oh. Yeah, because the rest of it matches, okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a two thousand and eighteen Navistar forty-three hundred truck with Timco six hundred B A H regenerative air sweeper attached for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. We will have a three-year note paying ninety-six thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Second.
Okay, sorry, roll call.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item three, motion to approve, disapprove table, the E C R I renewal for fourteen hundred.
Oh, this was the, the.
For the, yes, the mapping.
I'll make a motion to approve E S R I renewal for fourteen hundred dollars.
Roll call. Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item four, motion to approve, disapprove table, the putt and jump on the go for one thousand seven hundred for Family Festival.
I'll make a motion to approve putt and jump on the go, uh, for seventeen hundred dollars for Family Festival.
Roll call.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item five, motion to approve, disapprove table, the kids at their best donation for five thousand.
I'll make a motion to approve kids at their best donation for five thousand.
Roll call.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item six, motion to approve, disapprove table, the purchase of police department vehicle, two thousand and twenty-five Dodge Pursuit for thirty-nine thousand, sixty-seven dollars, or the two thousand and twenty-five Ford Police Interceptor Utility for fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. And then, Pedro, did you say you had?
Yeah, we're calling for.
More?
I've talked to people, and basically, I got a vehicle with another car, that's about a hundred dollars.
Okay, and my question was, did Mike ever get the numbers for the other stuff? Okay. Okay, how much?
The car that they're talking about is getting rid of. It already has some of the stuff that he said, and then for the law to put everything else on it, it's a hundred and twenty dollars. And then the other ones that I looked at, they would have involved, like, this part already has some of the stuff. We would have got another one with another car, that's not they know what it costs, probably another quarter, five thousand dollars.
Which was a question that we had last time on, was how much was it going to cost to put everything on there, and really didn't have.
Uh huh, we didn't have it at that time.
Honestly, I was expecting about eighty total.
We're, we're a little under.
Well, I looked at the ones that, how much you guys paid for the law for these cars, because I looked it up, I asked them, we didn't approve.
Uh huh.
And to print this stuff, twenty seventeen, I don't know what, sixteen, it was nineteen thousand. So.
For a car?
Yeah. So this is not as much as that, a lot more.
Uh huh.
But if it was that a vehicle that was going to cost us eight thousand, from the same people that we bought these two cars, by the time we pay, so you know, it's going to be another twenty-four, twenty-five thousand dollars to add the rest of the lights and metal console, like, and a radio, and a cage.
So do we need to go ahead and change this, because that's not the same price?
Table.
Or table it?
I did, I do have to put a vote for a part of the law.
We can't really table it, because this is only good for, um.
A certain amount of time.
Vote on the car, and then. Right. Vote on the, um.
Didn't you say, Pedro, that you found a completely different one than the ones we have on this list?
Yeah, this is the one.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's not either of these, with either of these.
Yeah, so these cars need one of these vehicles, or what has gotten in.
So, what do you, what, what kind, what is the year of that? Okay.
It's for a police.
And what is, what is the price on that one?
Fifty-three? Fifty-three, I'll give you the exact, fifty-three, four, sixteen.
But it already has stuff too.
Some of the stuff.
Yeah.
And, and, not that we need it, but it already has the bulletproof doors. I don't know if it works, but, that I, I'm like, I'm.
Hey, Dan, can we just change the amount?
If you want the total of.
Because it's the same make and year of the Ford, it's just a different amount.
Yes, of course, you just need to make that clear in the motion, um, but yes.
Yes.
And the vehicle itself was fifty-three even?
No, fifty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty.
Do we have a car already? Is it available?
Yes, that's why I told them to vote it before, you can get rid of it.
We need to probably specify in there that it is, the amount is to include the outfit charge. It would be seventy, I think it's seventy-four, seventy-four. Yeah.
One thirty, or something, something, something.
I believe we budgeted seventy thousand, but then we had twenty-five thousand for additional, um, contingency. That's a small equipment that we need to put together.
Well, that would be, the twenty would be all under the equipment, yeah. Okay. If I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the purchase of police department vehicle for a two thousand and twenty-five Ford Interceptor Utility for, um, seventy-four thousand, three hundred and thirteen. Forty-one. And forty-one cents to include, um, outfit of emergency equipment.
I'll second.
Roll call. Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay, line item seven, motion to approve, disapprove table, putting anything on the November Morgan County Elections Ballot. We don't have anything yet, we can go ahead and disa, just, we can just take, we can disapprove for now, and if later we come up with something.
Can we just table it, if we disapprove it, and start all over again?
Oh, then let's table it.
I'll make a motion to table, putting anything on the November Morgan County Election Ballot.
And I'll second.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item eight, motion to approve, disapprove table, senior citizens must be the occupant of the house that receives the senior citizen discount.
Make a, oh, sorry. Did you have a question? I'll make a motion to approve senior citizens must be the occupant of the house that receives the senior citizen discount. I'll second.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item nine, motion to approve, disapprove table, reserving the dunk tank from Town of Hill Rose for the Family Festival.
Make a motion to approve reserving the dunk tank from Town of Hill Rose for the Family Festival. Second.
Ellie?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item ten, motion to approve, disapprove table, reserving twenty-five tables for the car show and Family Festival from the city of Fort Morgan.
Was that included, the extra ones, that we put on there from last?
No, this is, these are from ours parks?
No, we were talking about reserving more, we even.
We didn't, so we added four, yeah.
Yes, I think it's five.
I'll make the motion to approve, reserve twenty-five tables for the car show and Family Festival from the city of Fort Morgan.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item eleven, motion to approve, disapprove table, fees for renting community building if they want to decorate the night before the event, if it's available, um, are from five to eight P. M. is free. If they want four hours, fifty dollars. If they need the whole day, then it would, it would be an additional two hundred and fifty dollars. Is everybody in agreement with that?
I'll make a motion to approve fees for renting community building if they want to decorate the night before the event. If it is available, are from five to eight P. M., free, four hours, fifty dollars, the whole day, two hundred and fifty dollars.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Naomi?
Yes.
Josie?
Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Line item twelve, motion to approve, disapprove table, free rent for the community building for one day for the local veterans. Um, so, uh, we had, um, someone coming out, it was Brett, Brett came and asked, but he texted me earlier today and was like, hold off, because they're still trying to do their planning, so he wasn't sure yet which way the program, they're making changes to the program. So he had brought it up last time, but he said if we could. So he had brought it up last time, but he said if we can just, um hold off on it, he's not ready for it, so I don't know if we want to table it, I think we should table it.
So this is just a special event that they're doing?
Right.
Because I kind of read it for I, I read it as for any veteran
Hmm, no.
That's kind of the way I read it.
Okay, that's not, that's not, that's not what, it was the intention.
Building for one day for the, the local veterans, so
So then table it?
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to table free rent for the community building for one day for the local veterans.
And I'll second.
Roll call?
And then Naomi?
Yes.
Josie? Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
We'll make sure that it's worded correctly when we come back to that. Old business to discuss? Anybody have any old business? No? New business, we have line item one, the Colorado Health Foundation gave Dub a scholarship to cover the All Hands in Northeast Colorado Leadership Program from May nineteenth through May twenty-third of twenty twenty-five. They believe it's, will be beneficial to the town, it does pay for her hotel and mileage. And hoping that it'll get us a step closer to receiving the grant for the parks. Is everybody fine with that? Okay. And line item two, two oh one, cedar expenses, Mike, do you want to give us?
Just throw everything we found, and at the bottom to throw what we did, they had to tie it off in the driveway. So come by Friday, they can't be getting to New York, then we'll be able to get them to drive.
So, okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mike.
Thanks, Mike, it was great.
And we don't have anything else, Dan didn't have nothing else, correct? Okay. If I can get a motion to adjourn the meeting? The time is, and give the time.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at seven oh eight P M.
Second.
Sorry. I'll second. Naomi?
Yes.
Josie? Yes.
Ellie?
Yes.
Cajun?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Angie?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting adjourned, thank you very much for those who attended tonight. Have a good evening, Dan, thank you.
Of course, yeah.
I'll be in touch with you. Uh-huh. Bye.
Thanks, bye.